That's good to see everybody here tonight, even if it's remotely. In terms of communication and review the agenda, just one change to the agenda I would like to make tonight. We'd like to pull the psychology contracted services discussion out of the consent agenda. And go ahead and just make the consent agenda a separate item minus that and then move on to the psychology contracted services through AM and a separate item.
All right, that being said, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as published minus the school psychology contracted services discussion. Do I have a motion? Okay, any further questions on the consent agenda minus that topic? Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as published?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to our next item of business, which would be a discussion on the school psychology contracted services with AMN Healthcare. I think that probably we need, we all got a memo from Mr. Freeman, but I think probably some of us have questions. I know that we have been trying to get more psychologists for a couple of years and that we are definitely backlogged in waiting for psychological services for some of our students, so maybe Robert, before we maybe before I even entertain a motion, you could just give us a little more background.
May I share my comments first?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. With discussion of AMN services, to avoid any conflict of interest, my daughter is an account executive with the Dallas branch of that location of that organization. And it's a possibility that this contract service could go through her desk, so I would like to recuse myself from any discussion and or vote.
Thank you.
Is that in Dallas, Texas, or Dallas, Oregon?
Dallas, Texas. But they do work nationwide. My daughter has made trips to the east and to the west from Dallas to recruit staff people for contract hire for various organizations. And I just want to make sure that there's no conflict of interest, even potential, so therefore I'm recusing myself completely from the discussion and the vote.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Freeman.
You're muted, sir.
Yeah, Robert, I don't show that you're muted, but I can't hear you. Yeah, Robert, still can't hear you.
You may be having, where's Howard's great granddaughter?
Exactly, right?
We need her.
If you've had earplugs plugged into that computer, you might need to check on that.
No, I've never had a problem before.
Well, Robert, while you work on that, jump in if you need to. I can give a little bit of background on this.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
I know Cheryl could probably share some insight as well, so.
Yeah, exactly. So for the last several, really for the last several years, we've, we have worked to hire and recruit and retain school psychologists in our school district.
Hear me now.
Oh, there you go, Robert. I'm hearing now.
Sorry about that.
It's all yours.
Okey dokey, totally apologize. Okay, so as Director Larson indicated, we have had at least one FTE posted for over two years. We've most recently have had two FTE posted over two years. We have posted on job boards that cover the United States and worldwide. We have posted on job sites where it's kind of like a dating game where we seek them out and we like them, but we need them to swipe left and we have, we have had no swipers yet. We, my point there is we're trying everything. Both former Director Burton and now Director Roberts have called universities that have school psychologist programs to speak directly with the professors there to talk about internships and paid internships and obviously that we're looking to fill FTEs, so. We have gone to job fairs where we've posted these. We're not the only one in Oregon and certainly the nation are all experiencing shortages in many positions, but certainly school psychologists. So another tactic we have, we tried was to put out a request for proposal to seek vendors who would help us fill these positions. And we had two companies submit RFPs. We went through an extensive evaluation process. I contacted both of them. Melissa contacted them. We landed on the one that I'm presenting tonight, AMN Healthcare. And a couple of things that drew us to that program or that company was one, they do have a base in Oregon. The other company was back east. I did contact them today, like I said, and it does turn out, I thought we were going to be dealing with a person in Portland, but their educational base recruiting is out of Denver, Colorado. So I do appreciate Director Johnson's recognition that he could be a perceived bias there, but I think the chances of his daughter helping with education is pretty slim, but again, I appreciate him doing that. My recommendation for you is in front of you, and again, that would be a company that helps us recruit. They do have access to traveling school psychologists. It's very similar to traveling nurse programs where people seek areas that they want to live for a while while they perform services. They do have access to a population of traveling school psychologists. And the contacted share that there are several of them that are looking to move to the Pacific Northwest, so that was encouraging. Might have been a sales pitch, I don't know. I hope that's a true statement. But yeah, so before you, as a recommendation to go with this company.
Let's go ahead and have a motion move forward and then we can ask some questions before we vote. So the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move that we go forward with this.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So.
I need a second.
I think Brandon seconded.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, all right, so let's, I think now there are lots of questions. I am sure Cheryl, I mean, obviously the cost is the big question. I know Cheryl, we have money set aside that if we were employing two full-time school psychologists, we obviously have set aside that money for their salary and benefits. I'm assuming that's the same pool of money that then we would be using to pay these essentially locum tenem fees. I, but I, maybe you can share, so that's my question. And then we, I know Director Lee has some questions.
Yes, that would be the same pool of money that we would use to hire or same budget that we would use to hire this contracted service. The contracted service will, I believe, cost us more, but we must have school psych assistance.
Charles?
Does, well, one question. The school psychologists are a member of the bargaining unit for these, for the teachers' union. Has the teachers' union signed off on this, or how would we deal with that?
Yeah, so they have. They're, they're well aware that we've been trying to hire these positions. This is not a permanent fix by any means. It could lead into that. It could, it could find somebody that wants to stay in our organization for a long period. And we put them on our contract, but the teachers, as throughout our entire organization, are feeling the crunch of only having, you know, basically three FTE of school psychologists when really the demand is five FTE.
So would these people, would they be physically here? And if so, how much? Or would it be a distance counseling or what?
That's a great question. So our number one priority is to try to get them onsite and have them work in our buildings, just like our regular employed school psychologists. They do have telepsychology services that are available, but that's, that's not our top choice. We, we prefer to have somebody onsite.
And I mean, how, how well fleshed out is this agreement with them? Have they, have they committed to have somebody onsite, or is that still to be negotiated? Is the amount of money still to be negotiated?
Well, yep, the amount of money is set. It's between eighty and eighty-five dollars an hour. The, they don't, they have people in their queue, if you will, that once, once I get approval from the board to enter into this agreement, I will give them a written statement, so they have it in writing, and then I will have a contact person. His name, I wrote it down, something Addison. And then, once he gets the scope of what we're looking for, then he will send that out to his contacts and recruit that way.
Okay, so it's, at least in part, it's as if, it's as if this outfit is a headhunting group that will find us some people that will come to work for us, but they'll still be employees of this other company.
Correct. So actually, Denny helped me understand, so even though we are going to pay an hourly fee, the company AMH Healthcare actually pays their salary and benefits, so they're, continue to be their employee. So this is, this, this process is used in the medical field quite often, so you have doctors that do this, nurses. It's, it's actually quite attractive to people that enjoy changing areas where they live, so they can still be employed, get a sense of our area and our culture and decide if they want to stay here or if they want to continue on. And, and remember how I started this. We've been, we've been looking now for years to fill these positions. And right now, our school psychs are, you know, we've pushed them about to the limit, so this is an attempt to try to take that pressure off. We are going to still continue to fill our positions with our own people.
And what is, what is our, what is our opt-out options? What is there, what was necessary to terminate the contract if we decided we don't need it, or if they decide they don't want to do it anymore?
Right, so we have in there that if we were able to fill those positions and no longer need their services, then we can end our agreement with them. Currently, it's up to the end of this school year. And so our, at the end of the school year, we're gonna, we'll decide where we're at. If we still need their services, then I would come to you and see if we could, we want to extend that, but we can opt out at any point.
And, I mean, the state has licensing requirements. I'm assuming these people they would recruit would be, would handle, would, would qualify under the state licensing requirements, be responsible that way.
Correct. The recruiting company is required to make sure that anybody they submit to us meets the qualifications that we set and then the licensing requirements for the state of Oregon.
That's all the questions I have for right now. You can let somebody else have a turn.
Anyone else have questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Rod.
Number one, how much more is it going to cost us? So somebody can guess. Number two, are there any other districts in the state that are using this company? And if so, I'm assuming have we've made contact with them? And then number three, I am a little concerned. I understand why we're doing this and we probably do need to do it, but I would hate that we have them here for three months and then they decide they don't like her, so they leave and then we're short again this year. And doesn't it take time for these folks to kind of get to know the kids you're working with? So if we haven't, I know it's, if we have an open door, is that a, that's a negative effect on our kids?
Yep, let me go in reverse order. So absolutely, we're in a relationship business. Our, all of our jobs are to build strong, long-lasting relationships with students. So this system is, process is not ideal by any means, but it will provide services to kids in the absence of what we have now, and it will help take the pressure off of our current employees. And if it, if it lasts for three months, then that's three months of service that we can provide and then we're right back to this, this point. So I think all of those concerns are valid. I wish I, I wish I could come to you with a recommendation for a permanent person, but I haven't been able to do that. Your middle one was, help me out again.
Are there any other districts?
Yes, so the Douglas ESD uses this company, not for school psychs, but for speech pathologists and other hard-to-find employees. And I spoke with Holly Hill, the HR director for the ESD, and she had nothing but good things to say about the company. They're very easy to work with, very responsive, and so far I've experienced that same thing. Clackamas ESD in Portland also uses them. They are trying hard to get in the Pacific Northwest and so they're, I think they're working hard to have a positive relationship with the districts. And so Clackamas also echoed what Holly said at, at the ESD, that it's a very positive relationship and a good company to work with. And the first one is the cost. As Cheryl said, it, it is going to cost more than what we pay our current school psychologists. We will use those two budgeted FTE to offset that. But I, I don't have the calculations to exactly how much more it's going to cost, but I'll bet Cheryl has already probably started working on that since you asked the question.
Well, it would really depend on, on what, what we would have hired someone at as for education and experience. I would project that this process anywhere from twenty to forty thousand dollars more per person.
And that's provided that we got someone full-time though, right? Because, I mean, obviously we have a pool of money set aside for two full-time salaries plus retirement plus benefits. And we may get someone that is willing to come for six months and then, then that's it. And then, you know, I do think, Rod, as, I mean, it really is truly just releasing a pressure valve. There are some things that the psychologists do that are one-time testing things. And I imagine that they would probably try to shuttle some of the less relationship-critical cases to whoever the locum tenem is. I mean, that's what I would do, but I figured they'll probably, yeah. Anyway, any other questions about this for Cheryl or Robert and?
Yeah, I just wondered if the employees of that organization, do they sign a contract for an amount of time? Six months, three months? You know, where they're obligated to stay at least a certain amount of time?
Yeah, Director Krimmets, I don't know the answer to that. The only thing I can say about that is that they are in such high demand right now that really they hold all the cards. I would hope that they do sign some kind of commitment to that company, and I can certainly find that out for you, but I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
You said it was eighty-five dollars an hour is what we would be paying. Is that the entirety of what would we be paying? Or is there a base fee that we start off with? If we don't use any hours at all, we still have to pay, or is it only based upon hours?
Yeah, great question. It's, it's eighty to eighty-five dollars an hour, and there is no setup fee or base initial fee to get in. It's only when they produce an employee and that employee works for us, they start counting the hours.
And it's, is it defined or separated from telehealth services versus in-person, or is that completely just open either way?
No, I think that's where the eighty and eighty-five come in, so I do think they charge different amounts for different services. And when I, when I get the person that is going to be my contact person, his name is Austin Addison. Austin and I would discuss what our needs are, and then that's where he would recruit those people at that wage.
There's no, there's no set requirement currently, and until we enter into that agreement, we won't find out if ninety percent of the services are telehealth and ten percent are in-person. There's no way of knowing?
Oh, we get, we get to determine that. So like I said, our number one priority is to get somebody onsite in our buildings, working directly with kids. If we, if we go two weeks and we can't find that person, then we'll start ratcheting down on what it is that they can provide and look at those options.
All right, any other questions before we go to a vote? All right, no one's speaking up. So all in favor of approving AMN allied services for contracted services for a school psychologist, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. At this point, we are going to conclude our regular board meeting and move into a work session. To start that, I'm going to just turn some time over to Superintendent Corrigan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the opportunity. I really love these board work sessions. It's a great opportunity for the board to ask questions and dig into some of the work. I want to take us a little bit down, just for a few minutes, a walk down memory lane of the last couple of years. I'll start by just reiterating something that I've said before, and that is that choice is a critically important ingredient in the recipe of a productive learning experience for kids. And so I just want to go back real quick to March of 2020. In the nineteen twenty year, it seemed like a long time ago, and just yesterday at the same time, schools closed in March. We moved into comprehensive distance learning. That was a directive from Department of Education. There were lots of things we didn't have in place. There were lots of things I didn't have in place. Our staff and kids were doing the right things. In the spring of 2020, they just weren't supported with the basics of a learning management system, adequate sufficient devices and access. And in the end, there really was not an element of choice for kids and for staff and for families. Over the, the following, in that, in that same time, in the spring and moving into the summer of 2020, we, we started to really look systematically at, you know, ways to provide choice during this pandemic for families who might more comfortable with an improved and supported remote option. At the beginning of the 2021 year, last year, we offered some improved remote options for families, starting, we'll just start with K5 for a minute. These were taught by our own elementary teachers. That was a model that worked pretty well. We had about three hundred of our families that showed, or three hundred students, so it was a little less than three hundred families that opted in for this remote option last year. There are some challenges at the secondary level around coursework and licensure, so our approach at the secondary schools was a bit different. We wanted to ensure that our kids had access to those teachers, those professionals in each content area. So among other things, while we were implementing a learning management system, we moved forward with a plan to provide choice to students and families on how they wanted to access their teachers, either in person or remotely. So we, you know, purchased TVs and video cameras that allowed kids to access their classes remotely, if that was what the family's desired option was. It was a challenge. Staff did an awesome job, but, and it was worth, I will say, it was an innovation worth pursuing as it provided an element of choice. But it also had its setbacks and drawbacks. It made things a challenge in the classroom to prioritize kids. And staff were having to juggle kids online and kids in the classroom. And although it was an important step for us, an element of choice, it was problematic in some ways as well. So over the course of this summer, Fabos team, working together, we had several building admins, Danny and Michelle and others that worked on some additional improvements that really centered in choice, efficacy, and access. I've said this before, but the majority or many of our gaps, I'd say sometimes, you know, it could be the majority of our gaps. When we look at achievement, oftentimes are really access and opportunity gaps. I'm really grateful for the work the team's done over the last several years, including this summer and putting some options together. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Danny to talk a little bit about the Roseburg Virtual School. And, and I think in that context of kind of where we were not too long ago and where we are, hopefully that context helps as Danny rolls forward to explain Roseburg Virtual. Ms. Jardine?
Hi, everyone. I'm Danny Jardine. I am the principal of Roseburg Virtual School. So let's see, we have about one hundred and twenty-five students and we are kinder through fifth grade this year. And you can see the breakdown of our, of our classes. They're pretty comparable actually of what our in-building classes are. They started out a little higher and we kind of had a fluctuation of kids in and out over the first couple of weeks. And we're kind of holding steady around one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and thirty kids, so that's, that's good. So those are kind of our demographics. We are housed at the Old Rose Building, the upper campus. Michelle, I think that's on the next slide. I think where we're housed. So that's kind of nice. Last year when we had the remote school, our remote elementary teachers were kind of spread out in every nook and cranny across the district that we could find a space for them. And when we debriefed at the end of the year, the one thing that all of our teachers really kind of agreed on is it was really, really hard to establish a community with our kids and with teachers, just not having that commonplace. We've seen this year so far, just having a spot for parents to be able to come and pick things up and stop in and talk to the teachers if they need to. Is, it's been, it's been a nice upgrade, so we're all super thankful for that. Our program is different than last year. Last year, we did kind of the typical remote schedule that, you know, a lot of districts did, where teachers used our current curriculum and had Zoom meetings in the morning and then would provide assignments through Google Classroom. This year, we are using a curriculum from, it's called Florida Virtual School, and it's meant to be an online asynchronous curriculum. It really lends itself to being online, gives families a lot more flexibility for when they can complete the lessons, so that their school hours don't necessarily have to be set. And we're getting some pretty good feedback about that. We have teachers in the district that were Roseburg teachers that we hired, and we have a teacher at every grade level. And these teachers provide live, live sessions every day. We do a lot of community building. Every teacher does a morning meeting. And then they offer sessions mostly in our core subjects, math and reading. And it's kind of more of a broader global type teaching, looking at concepts and that type of a thing, rather than every day, here's your specific lesson and then go do the assignment. It's kind of more at a glance and support. And that really frees up their time to be able to work with small groups and one-on-one and be available for really a more individualized, a bit individualized pacing, you know, schedule for the kids and families, which is nice. The other exciting part about having an in-person building is that we are able to offer in-person opportunities. Of course, they're optional for families, so if we have struggling kids or families that are struggling with the technology part of the platform, they can come in, they can meet with their teachers, they can get that help right there in person, which is always helpful. Today, we got to offer our very, very first in-person opportunity, and we had our esteemed teachers. And we had our esteemed teachers of the district come and facilitate this. And it was so nice. We offered two different sessions. The kids learned about rockets. And we had, we separated them out into groups and we had, you know, a primary group and a, and an older elementary group of kids, two different sessions. I think altogether, we had probably about forty to forty-five kids that came in for this. And they got to do a little science experiment. They built rockets and then we went outside and launched them. And that was super fun. So we are looking forward to providing more in-person opportunities to, to get kids together, be around other kids, get to do things with their teachers in person. That's been fun. Next slide, and I'll kind of talk a little bit more about the curriculum piece. So the way this model works is that the students have a learning coach at home, and that can be a parent, grandparent, whoever's home with them. They will need more help at home because they just, they'll need more support. A lot of it is asynchronous, but then they also have opportunities to meet with their teacher every day to get extra help. I would say between the Zooms and the curriculum, kids would spend between three to five hours per day. But like I said, they have the ability to flex that so they could work on the weekend or work on evenings to get things done. It just gives a lot of flexibility. But that's kind of what we're finding is three to five hours-ish depending. And we are offering the four core classes. So we have ELA, math, social studies, and science. Florida Virtual does offer a couple of elective classes. But we wanted for this first year to really stick with the core and get that foundation really settled and kind of figure out the caseload. It is much more rigorous and we didn't want to burden the kids. So we decided this year to kind of take that elective model and that would be our in-person offerings. So that's kind of what our model is. For, for your viewing, when they send out this slideshow, I have put in two different links. The first link is just a short video. It's about a two-minute video. And it kind of just walks you through what the Florida Virtual Elementary Component looks like and the characteristics and features of the program. And then the second link actually takes you to a third-grade language arts lesson that you can go through and see what a sample lesson looks like. So that is our elementary virtual option, and it's been super fun. Are there any questions? I think the next part is the secondary. I don't know if we want to save the questions for after all virtual.
Yeah, I do see someone with a hand raised. If you would just go ahead and email Assistant Superintendent Me with your question or comment, that would be the best thing to do today. Thank you.
It seems so dangerous to be giving us a production like this where we're listening and looking at the slides and then give us these links that tempt us to just click on them and not pay any attention.
But these pictures were from our, our in-person today. So these are really our kids. These aren't just like fake things I found on the internet. This was from our rocket experiment. So it was super, super fun to have the kids in the building.
I had a quick question. I'd asked earlier about the ability of kids to transfer between in-person and this online version. Are we still allowing that to happen? Is there a waitlist currently to get into online classes?
Yeah, so we have a waitlist going and we, we closed it after a certain point. The way the curriculum works is it's paced out over the semester and it doesn't compact as you add students late. And so the, the tricky part is when you add kids, they have all of the things to do. And so at some point, it's just overwhelming and too much for kids to be able to catch up. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so people aren't really on a waitlist right now. There's just, there was a cutoff point and it's already passed.
There was a cutoff point, yeah. If we, you know, if there's a real extreme circumstance and we can, you know, work with the family that is something that would make it worth it to try and navigate the system, we can, but it's really not suggested by Florida Virtual. Both Florida Virtual and our secondary component that Michelle is going to talk about, they both suggested to have a cutoff date, but then it'll reset again at the end of the semester when they start the second semester courses. And then so we can, you know, ebb and flow and go through that waitlist and see if those families still want to enroll for the second semester.
What was the cutoff point after classes started? I mean, how long was, was it until the cutoff point?
Um, I want to say it was about two weeks ago, a week and a half ago.
Yeah, Danny, it was after three weeks.
Yeah, it was, yeah. That would be a lot for a kid to make up when you think about it. You know, if a kid had to make up three weeks' worth of school, at some point, it's just too much for them to, to get through.
Because we're talking about kids that will be transferring from, from regular in-person schools so that you have to worry about where they are in terms of the school calendar. If it weren't for that, if it was just kids coming in that were non-schooled at all, there is, we could probably just start a class every time we had twenty-five third graders in line. As this program, it's not necessarily tied to the school year, it seems to me.
We have it tied to the school year. So when, when we uploaded everything, you, you set the dates. And so some schools, like you can just have it keep going and have rolling starts. But we, we tried to tie ours to fit in with what our school year is so that we could report at the same time and record on report cards at the same time. So we just use those start and stop dates of semesters, just to keep everything consistent.
And that probably makes it easier for kids to transfer in and out at those particular dates. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Danny. I think Ann had a question.
Yeah, I, I was just wondering also on that, if you said it was more rigorous than, and you also said it was more, more, more general, more comprehensive. So how different is it than the current curriculum that is being used in our, in our regular school district?
And I can answer that question. It's not that it's more rigorous than what we are utilizing in our own classrooms. It's just this is completed asynchronously. So the students do a lot of the work on their own with the, with their parents supporting them. So it's just, it's, it's rigorous in that aspect is it's, they're doing a lot more of it independently. Where in the classroom, they would do more of it with the teacher in the room with them.
Okay, so more similar to a homeschooling scenario?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so moving on to our six twelve virtual option. And this slide shows the current enrollment in our six twelve virtual option for this school year and for Fremont, Jolene, and RHS. Our virtual option utilizes Apex Learning as the learning platform. Students access a learning management system that provides the instruction and assignments for students to complete asynchronously. So students complete the courses asynchronously. Sorry, going on to this one. These are some of the highlights from our six twelve virtual platform. Students continue to be enrolled in their home school. So they're continued to be enrolled in Jolene, Fremont, and RHS. And they're able to participate in sports and extracurricular activities. The platform includes translation services as well as literacy support, remediation, and language development support. Course progress and grades are tracked on a student dashboard, which is a learning management system similar to Canvas, which we use in our six twelve schools right now. And there's also printable study guides to help students stay on track. And students complete the courses asynchronously, but they're not working alone. And this slide highlights the supports available for students. And so the student is in the middle, and then the supports for them, there is a certified teacher. This year, we're utilizing teachers from Apex Learning. Apex teachers are Oregon-certified teachers. And the teachers provide the feedback on assignments, respond to messages from students within twenty-four hours, and are available to conference with students during office hours. In addition to the teacher, there are tutors available. And the tutors are available for real-time support via a chat widget. So a student can be in the middle of working through their math, science, ELA, or social studies course, and they need assistance and they can utilize the tutor, tutoring link that is in their student dashboard to get immediate assistance at that time. In addition, there are student services. Student services provide non-academic support for students. So this is support for questions on how to utilize the learning management system or for technology questions. And then students also have a coach. Now, the learning coach is a parent or guardian who is in the home. And the learning coach receives weekly progress reports and is expected to touch base with their students to monitor progress. And then with, along with that is a mentor. And the mentors are Roseburg School District staff members. And every one of our six through twelve virtual students is assigned a mentor. Our mentors are Jennifer Weiss, who supports RHS students, and Jessica Day, who supports RHS, Jolene, and Fremont students. And the mentors monitor progress, they monitor attendance, they reach out to families to touch base, they schedule meetings on Zoom with students to provide assistance. And they're really that daily check-in and support for our students. So upstarting our secondary and elementary virtual options has really, has been a heavy lift. And I would like to recognize and thank Brad Bogartis, who's an assistant principal at RHS, Jill Weber, our principal at RHS, as well as Danny Jardine for all of their work on our virtual options this year. Are there any questions from board members regarding our virtual options?
Is this the same Apex that we used when we were all on virtual?
No, that's Canvas. Canvas is our learning management system. This is Apex Learning, which is a, they offer a couple of different things for us. This is their virtual school option. So these are the courses. They offer all of the courses for our virtual kids, students. We also utilize them for credit recovery and for our GED program. So they offer a few options. But Canvas is a learning management system that all of our six twelve students, who are not in the virtual option, utilize for their day-to-day schooling.
Okay. Different curriculum than as far as like reading, history, is it the same?
It's a different curriculum, but the same standards. So the same standards we teach in our brick and mortar schools, but just utilizing Apex Learning's platform.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I, thank you, Principal Jardine and Assistant Superintendent Me. I'm going to turn the time over now to Superintendent Corden, who's going to give us an update on our elementary school.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thanks, everybody, for your work on giving these options to our kids and families. I'm excited about those this year. So as we, as we kick off, and I want to thank our elementary principals for being here tonight as well. They have a short presentation for you tonight. But before we begin, I just want to talk a little bit about our elementary school and these years in particular. So elementary school years are beautifully formative and incredibly important years in the lives of our kiddos. They honestly provide a foundation for the way that kids think about themselves and others, the way they work, and in a certain degree, the trajectory of their future success in school and beyond. We're, what we are doing is building an elementary experience for our kids that is growing our kids as readers and thinkers and problem solvers, problem solvers, regardless of their zip code, regardless of their socioeconomic status, regardless of their home language or the color of their skin. Each of our elementary school is centering their work around our strategic plan. And they're focusing on those areas and focusing on the whole child. I like to think of our elementary schools, all of our schools, but we'll, we'll talk about elementary tonight as and schools and not or schools. And what I mean by this is you go around the state and the country and you talk to superintendents or principals. Oftentimes, what you'll hear are schools that are focused on literacy or math or science or belonging or discovery. And the schools in our school district are not made up of or schools. They are and schools. We want to make sure our kids and our staff wake up excited to learn and contribute and explore. Our classrooms are places of joy. They need to be places where kids can be deeply engaged in learning. And our kids and staff are working hard, you say, to, to meet those grade level standards in all areas and having a rigorous education while focusing on the social and emotional needs of kids and families and staff. I am grateful for our principals who are here tonight. They're going to do some sales and their schools do this evening, as well as provide you with some of the ways that are focusing on supporting our kids and families. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jennifer Thompson, principal of Eastwood Elementary.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Thompson, the principal at Eastwood. And Eastwood is, we call ourselves the nature school because we have a more than forty-acre campus. We have a nature trail that runs the perimeter of campus. It's about three-quarters of a mile long. We have a replica Indian Plank House that was just refurbished this last weekend, actually, by a group of volunteers that we use during third-grade nature days, where we host all of the third graders from the district on our campus and also is part of fifth grade Camp Eastwood, where the fifth graders get to camp on our campus for three days and two nights. We have a variety of wildlife. In fact, there was just a bear sighting not too long ago. So in my office, one of the first things that I got to be introduced to was the bear sighting signs that I get to hang up if we have a bear sighting, deer, turkeys, et cetera. And we are excited to continue our steelhead fish hatchery work where we acclimate steelhead to Deer Creek that runs through our campus and release them each spring. And our third graders raise steelhead from eggs to fry, and then we let those go into the creek when they are ready. And this year, we are also excited about extending, expanding our school garden, which we got a fancy deer fence around last year and continuing our track lap leader competition where all of the kids during PE try to see who can get the most laps around the track each month and then cumulatively throughout the year on our new track that we just got last year.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate that. Katrina Hansen, principal at Fergrove.
Hi, I'm Katrina Hansen. And I am here at Fergrove Elementary. We have about two hundred and fifty kids. Having worked in several schools in our district, I'm really excited to see yet another staff that's dedicated to, we make lots of connections and we're embracing the initiatives that we have as a district. Lots with the five D frameworks. So we're really focusing on student engagement and classroom environment, math instruction, and social emotional learning. Fergrove community is incredibly supportive of each other and our kids and our families. And we've got a great garden and a beautiful track. And I already kind of touched on that next paragraph, so it's nice to see you all.
All right, thank you. Debbie Price.
Hi, I'm Debbie Price. I am the new kid on the block. I am the principal of Florton Four Elementary in West Roseburg. We have around three hundred and thirty students. I, I've been really excited to become part of the Florton community. It's really clear from the way that it's situated that this is part of this. That this is part of this neighborhood. It's part of the culture. They come, people come on the weekends and walk their dogs. It's it's parks. And community, it just has a wonderful feel to it. It's got a really strong sense of belonging and invitation for people to be here. I'm excited this year to work with all of the students and the teachers and learn all of these people in my first year. And I'm embracing change and growth in myself. In our team and definitely in our students after the last couple of years, they've grown, but we can help them grow more this year. So excited to be here and excited for grace and support inside of this community. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, over to Lisa.
Hi, everybody. I made a move down to Green Elementary, which is closer to my home, so my commute's a little shorter these days. I have thoroughly enjoyed getting to know in these first few weeks our green families and students. And what makes Green amazing. We are focusing, we have lots of new staff members, new to the profession, but also new to Green. So we're really focusing on our school community with our instruction and our students. And we are wanting to meet students where they're at and provide them opportunities for growth. And as the whole child. And I'm hoping to create an environment that allows students and staff to take risks and try new and hard things. We have very positive group of people willing to just really go above and beyond to meet our students' needs. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate that. On to Don Schrader.
Hello, I'm Don Schrader. I'm the principal at Hughcrest Elementary School. I see that there's this PowerPoint I haven't really had a lot of time with, but just a couple of highlights from it. We have 380 students at our school. I just wanted to kind of talk a little bit about what our vision was at Hughcrest and what it is now. Our vision is to use a Star Trek reference to Bull to Go when no school has gone before. But with our vision, we want to always inspire, engage, motivate students. We want students to feel safe, loved and valued and empowered. And that's our mission at Hughcrest. Of course, we're focusing on rigor and. And making it relevant for kids, but we also are building strong relationships. And that's a big important factor at Hughcrest. So we have great staff. It's my second year there. It's been great. I love it. That's Hughcrest.
Thank you much, Don. Appreciate that. Tammy.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for serving our community through your role as members of our board. As elementary principals, we really appreciate all that you do. So thank you for that. We're still implementing a curriculum that for some teachers, this is not, they've not spent as much time with students in person. Teaching it in Ready Math. And so we're excited this year. We've changed up our leadership team at Melrose to really work with our teachers on differentiation strategies using Ready Math. We love that the district invests in professional development for our teachers around mathematics. And I know we have some leadership coming up around that. We had a team meeting this last month around our live unified team. At Melrose and our work to become a unified champion school for Special Olympics. And we're growing our strategies around inclusion at Melrose School. This month's theme is composure. So our students are working to take big belly breaths to gain composure when the world isn't going their way. Learn strategies to calm and be safe keepers. We're using some new tools to support our reading curriculum. The dyslexia toolkit is another great. Piece of equipment that our teachers can use to address learning challenges for students in the areas of reading. Excited about that. We have a powerful PTN group that is just helping us make connections with families, which we've all missed. And I'm really proud that the district is taking on the Bond project again. And our hopes that we can add a gymnasium to our campus in the near future. We are so proud to be a part of the Roseburg Public Schools. And again, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Tammy. On to Dan Indicott.
Man, how are you guys? I'm Dan Indicott. Who doesn't want to go to any one of these schools, man? I'm telling you, I'm ready to go back to schools. Anybody with me? I want to have a great elementary experience here. So I'm going to let you guys read while I talk. So I know you can do that, but I tell you, I'm excited to get to light up about our great school. We refer to ourselves down at Sunny Slope as the slope. So our beginning year assessments have been done. And I'll tell you, right now, we're extrapolating that data to develop ways to align a focus with our district goals. And with our building needs and structures. So I thought I'd speak about the district goals a little bit and how we integrate and put that with our building implementation. So we do safe and inclusive here. What we practice is our shine implementation. And so at Sunny Slope, we shine, and that means we're safe. We're involved, are safe, helpful, involved, nice and empathetic. And we really want to work that so that we have a safe and inclusive environment. We're about effective operations. And I'm telling you, we have a whole building. I want to make sure I mention everyone that we're about our cafeteria folks, our maintenance folks, our custodial. Our instructional assistants, our TE, our teachers with PE and music with tag, CDS, TOSA. We want to make sure our learning specialists are focused, our office staff. We want to work with the district office and man, we have Aaron who delivers to us every day and that guy is like clockwork. And then we have to pair and work our effective operations with the ESD. And how are we integrating speech and how are we integrating their specialists? To help some of our kids that need a little more resources. So we're excited as soon as volunteers can come back to also add, what's the community look like? How do we integrate that? We've got leadership development with, we have teachers piloting ERLA. We have teachers piloting the 5D and helping with that in our leadership ability. We have a technology specialist and we have a tag coordinator at our school. And we are still, like everyone else has mentioned, really focused on our math implementation with Ready Math. So when we move from leadership development back to that systems development. You know, this year was different. It was interesting because we got to do a schedule with a full time music specials. So last year we had PE and this year we have music. And man, how do we identify that? How do we rework our schedules that we're working on that? And that's part of the systems we did. We want to identify our needs with helping out with subs. We have a plan. So if we can't get a sub just because of the environment and with labor shortages, what's that look like at our building? We have group meetings where we talk about students and we talk about how we can help them, what resources can we give them? And now that cohorts are a little different. How do we, how do we refunction recess and lunch? And how many kids can we get in the cafeteria and what's really best for students? So we're able to look at all those different systems and say, what's working for our students? What worked well in the past and how do we change that? And then last, it really, right, our focus is on giving us an overarching goal to help students. Both academically and with their personal success. And that's part of those district goals. And that's with appropriate and timely instruction. So with our I-ready, our ERLA, our wonders, our small group and grip and our 5D, we're really trying to align that all. So hopefully, I think there's a time for questions maybe at the end. But if there's anything I can help you out with, we invite you down, come on down to the slope, the green area is nice and we'd love to see you.
Okay, appreciate that. Thanks, Dan. And Rick Snyder, take it away.
Well, hello, everybody. Nice to see you this evening. I want to extend my thanks to the board for the work they do and for the support that they obviously have for us as an administrative team. Thank you a bunch. So I see on the screen that we had 319 as of this morning, we actually have 341 and throw in probably a dozen. Students. From our preschool program that's in there. So we're about 350. Anyway, I'm excited about the staff that's assembled at Winchester Elementary, just a really great caring group of people. And so we seem to have our fair share of students who are dysregulated. So that's certainly a goal of us kind of early as we start the year is to help kids. As they come out of situations where many kids weren't in school last year in a meaningful way. And so it's been quite a transition. So it's been all hands on deck. And everybody has to chip in for our kids who are, you know, really struggling at this point. I'm grateful to the board. We added an additional kindergarten teacher just before school started. And so that was a great find for us to be able to have those kids. So those classrooms are a great level. They're about 19, 18 kids. And then our final class has 16 kids in it. So that's great for kids, for learning. Also, we have our CDS back. And so she was called in the pressed into service last year to do some distance teaching. So greatly missed at our school Winchester and so, and Carrie is back. We now have a halftime TOSA, which also was. Challenging last year for us to do without. So we just assembled a really terrific group of people. And really happy to to lead the charge there at Winchester. We have great offerings for our students, have a dynamic PE teacher. We've hired a really great first year music person who really is a music person. So thrilled to have those two things in place. The kids look forward to the situations they get to have outside of school. And we got just the nicest cafeteria, gym, really wonderful cafeteria workers. Our custodians have chipped in and they're on the line serving kids. And so it really has just been a really great group effort. So excited about another year at Winchester School. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. And just want to thank all of our elementary principals who have truly embraced the maxim that we are a school district. We are not a district of schools. That are about doing, you know, just random acts of work, but we are working together to support all our kids. So thank you. And any questions from the board? We've got our principals hanging on here. If you have any specific questions, please.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Yeah, Director.
I really enjoyed each school having a brief. Time to talk to us about their schools. I think this is really cool and be nice to have. This maybe another time, a couple of times during this year. I personally, health keeps me, allows me to do it. I'm going to, my plan is to visit all the schools again this year. And I always enjoy that. I do have a comment about Dan Indicott. And what I don't understand why he wasn't, he was never that enthusiastic when he was a board member.
So being on the boards, not as good as being a principal. Just going to say it out there.
I'm very proud of you, by the way, Dan. So anyway, thank you, principals. You are all amazing.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions from the board? See Director Kremets with her hand up?
Yeah, just wondered. The Rick talked about PE and music being there at Winchester. Is that true with all of the elementary schools? Do they have both PE and music teachers?
Yeah, we're happy to say, and kudos to the board and and. You know, we take, we can, you can talk all you want about the whole child and how much you really think these things are important, or you can just do it. And over the last couple of years, it's been an investment that the district's leaned into. And we're happy to say that we have full time PE and music in all of our elementary classrooms.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I don't see any hands up from the board. Okay. Let's go ahead. Director Larson, if it's okay with you, we'll kick some time over to Michelle. Is that okay?
Yeah, for the tag follow up.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Chair Larson and Superintendent Corden. Just wanted to follow up on a request from our previous board work session regarding students enrolled in tag. We had a question about then percentage of students of color that are in our talented and gifted program. So currently, our school district, we have 22% of our students are students of color. And in our talented and gifted program, 23% of our students are students of color. So the percentages match very well. And just to give you context, we have 167 students who are currently enrolled in our. Are identified as talented and gifted students in the district.
Just for maybe those who aren't super aware of what it means to be identified. Do you want to just give just a quick overview of what that threshold is?
Sure. Our talented and gifted students, they typically are in the 98th to 99th percentile. There's several standardized tests that they are given as well as observations from teachers. It can be for academic, but it also can be for. Other pieces as well, you know, they do look at intelligence skills, but that's not the final determination for it. But it's really for students who are at the upper levels. And often they don't excel academically. I know I have one child who's talented and gifted in my house. And he's just a different thinker than everybody else. He thinks outside of the box. He's very emotional and so he has needs. And this just goes along with, and we identify the needs of all of our students. So looking at the individual needs of our students and providing them the supports that they need.
Yeah, I just throw in there too, I think oftentimes we think about gifted and kind of all in one box. And there's a, there's a pretty vast difference between an academically gifted kid and an intellectually gifted kiddo. It's oftentimes the intellectually gifted kiddo that sometimes we're like, what am I going to do with this kid? I'm really having to work hard with this kid. And I think, you know, we're really trying to support staff with what that looks like. How do you support a kid that's intellectually gifted? Oftentimes. You know, they, in certain situations, those kiddos can actually be perceived as kind of causing a ruckus. And really working on, you know, how do we and. You know, how do we support each kiddo there? And so I think along with, along with some great supports in tag, and I think some needed supports to continue. I think we're starting to see a broader identification and more importantly, identification doesn't do much if there's not support and increased support for our kids.
Thank you. Nee, really the final thing. On the agenda today is just to make sure there aren't any other questions and answers. We're, we're really trying to take this time to help us as board members know the work that's happening in our schools. To be aware of who our principals are. It was wonderful to see their faces, to know who they are and what they're working on and what they're excited about and what they're struggling with. To know what we're offering as far as choice for families with our virtual school and potential for growth there. I know personally. And Danny and Michelle may know these numbers. I'm curious how many kids we had who attended previous charter schools, that virtual charter schools that have switched to, for instance, our charter schools. I like that, you know, as a district, we're working hard to do that. So really tonight was just about helping us start to become aware. As we move forward in the work of supporting our kids and our teachers and our staff of what is happening day to day in our district. So are there any board members with any final questions or answers? This evening? Yeah, Reverend Johnson.
I would like to thank Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nee for looking up those numbers and giving us those data tonight. I'd like to let her know and each of you know that when I moved here in 1989. In the city of Roseburg, there was only five black people, five in the whole city. As the city has grown more diverse, I wanted to see the tax students continue along the same growth rate. And it has, and I'm very proud of that. Because it has proven history in other districts and other part of the country that they fall behind, especially African Americans or black people. And I just want to make sure that we recognize that and I'm grateful for the extra effort that she went through to gather that data and presented to the board.
Any other questions for the fine folks this evening?
Madam Chair, will you be taking public comment?
We don't take public comment on our work session meetings. We just do those on our. On, so it's every other meeting that we do public comment. So our next meeting in two weeks that will be on October 13th, there will be public comment. And it's actually in the middle of the meeting. So if you look at the agenda, it's shortly after the consent agenda is public, or not in the middle. It's, it looks like it's in the middle. It's actually the beginning. So yeah, public comment doesn't happen during our work sessions.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
If you do have questions or concerns, you're always welcome to reach out to us by email.
Perfect. No, I thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you for joining us this evening and we will adjourn.
See you in two weeks.